I think I'm going to turn it right over to Russ. Russ has a brief presentation and an outline of what we're going to be discussing tonight.
I'll try to be brief and I won't just read my PowerPoint. But it just has some things to talk about. So let's see once we can get through this. So what we plan on covering tonight, just, and I don't have a printed agenda, but we're going to talk about where we're at in 2023. The whole purpose of this is to give you a flavor of how we see 2023, ending the end of the year as far as revenue projections and expenditures. By city code, I need to give you an update on where we're at with our fund balance. We'll talk about the history on shared revenue and for the first time in a long time, we have some increases coming in the shared revenue. We'll also talk about tax levy and other revenues that come in. We'll give you a little overview on what's happened with our assessed and equalized valuations and rates. We'll talk a little bit about wage and benefit projections. We'll discuss a little bit about our debt projections and capacity. Talk about what our levy needs are based on certain assumptions that are going into our budget preparation work. We have all of the requests in from the various departments. We'll look at what we can afford from a levy standpoint. And then the other purpose we want to talk about this evening, and we've talked to council a little bit about is special assessments. Where do we go from here on special assessments as it relates to funding various components? So that was what we're hoping to cover tonight, if that's okay. So let me just start out in the 2023, and again, I apologize because I don't like to put a lot of numbers. I do have copies of the presentation. If you want to follow along, great. If you think you need to see numbers, I can hand them out now. I don't know if you have preference, one way or another.
I'd love a copy.
Yeah, I'll take a copy.
You'll take one now?
Okay, why don't we just pass?
One says yes. We'll pass them around. Because I know, just looking at some of the numbers, it's hard to read some of the numbers.
For everybody on the screen.
Thanks Denise.
Like when I used to bar, the most popular drink is whatever the first person has.
Exactly.
I'll take one too.
So on this schedule, what we're trying to do is look at what happened in 2022. If you look at our actual numbers, total revenue is about $50 million. This is just in our general fund. In 2023, our budget was 52,2. Actually, 52,282,7. Right now, year-to-date is $30 million. But we got a lot of things still coming in. Our year-to-date should be through the end of July. And then we have the projection. We're projecting to be really just a titch over our budget at 52,4. So if you compare our 23 projection versus our 22 year-to-date, we got a $1.5 million increase on the revenue side or about 2.8%. So that's what we're seeing for our revenue numbers, just kind of projecting forward for 2023. So we'll be good, just barely good, but we're looking pretty good on the revenue side. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about 2023 revenue projections or revenue numbers.
What was the miscellaneous income?
Miscellaneous income is, oh, I knew you were going to ask me that question.
Only because it's $900,000 over budget.
Yeah.
In the good direction.
Yeah. I'd have to go back and look.
Okay, no worries.
Keep going Russ. Challenge accepted. All right, well, he does, while the city manager looks at that, on the general fund expenditures, we just have the major categories of general government, public safety, public works, transportation, culture and recreation, conservation and development, and unclassified, and that's transfers going out. In '22, we were at 50,001. Our '23 budget was 54,2 again. To date, we've spent 23,9. We're looking at 55 million as a projection. So we're projecting a little bit over budget, but I think we're overestimating our projection. I think some of our personnel numbers are coming in lower than anticipated or budget. But when we did our budget calculations and projections, we're projecting payroll to be fully expensed. But I think there's going to be some savings here, but it's too early to tell. On the expenditure side, we're up about 4.9 or about 8%. That's from '22 to '23. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on expenditure. Answer or look up.
And most of our miscellaneous revenue is interest earnings.
Okay, thanks.
We're doing better. Interest earnings.
Interest rates are up.
Oh yeah.
1%. Oh, we're getting into more weeds than what I wanted to today, but.
We were getting below 1% for several years now.
I'm going to defer to Julie because I think we're right around the 4% to 5% right now as far as rates.
Depends on, depends on maturity length. So some of our most recent that we invested in were up to like 5.5%. So it depends on length of maturity for cities and depends on what we're investing in. But 5% would be the average and some are higher.
Thank you. Problem?
So at the end of, when we did our audit, our unassigned fund balance was 19.6. With our revenues projected right now to be over our budget by 185,000. That doesn't look right. But anyways, at this, on this slide, we show it being over. So we're reducing our general fund budget. Yeah, we're over 354,000 on the expenditure side based on our projections right now. Council approved a loan to Tax Increment District 25. So that's coming out of fund balance. That would leave an estimated fund balance at 17.2. Our policy says we should be at 30% of expenditures. 30% of our budget is 16,4. So we're about, almost a million, about $800,000 over our max.
And just to point out, the 2.3 million, that will be eventually repaid. So that'll actually get restored to fund balance. And speaking of interest, getting about, what, 4.5 Ross?
We had about 4 and 1/4, I think, or 4.5. So for 2024, it'll mean about another $120,000 in additional interest revenue to the general fund based on the interfund loan because we are charging the Tax Increment District for that loan and they're paying, they're paying that off.
What was the loan for?
The loan was for repayment of our obligation to the previous hotel owners. We had a pay-go and we paid that off. And then there was.
Loan from TIF 17, right?
Correct.
We're paying, borrowing for TIF 25 to pay TIF 17.
Okay.
Okay.
Still a healthy fund balance?
It is, it's still healthy, but it's not so healthy that we have to spend a little bit more. But if we wanted to, we could tap into it. Our minimum fund balance is 8, 8.7. So if you wanted to use some fund balance for one-time things, you could consider it. Right now, as the city manager and myself are looking at department requests, we weren't anticipating drawing that down. But again, that would be a policy decision for the council to determine as we go through the budget process. So we have a little bit of flexibility. Just a quick chart showing, going back to 2014, what's happened with our fund balance. It was steady for a number of years. It went up through 2022 and then we had the drawdown a little bit coming into '23 that we just talked about with that loan getting issued. So some historical perspective. This is the point where the city manager and myself would start harping about the fact that we're not getting any more shared revenue payment. If you look into 2024, and it should have been estimated. I don't know why that didn't come across. But anyways, 2024 is our estimate at this time. We go from 9, 6 to 11, 5. And somehow, yeah, we have an increase right now, a 3% in the general fund levy. But that's just the general fund levy by itself. And I'm going to talk about the total levy in just a little bit. Other revenues relatively flat. Shared revenue, while we're getting more shared revenue. If you go back to 2016, our shared revenue was 22% of the pie. And it went down as far as 18%. Even with this new influx, we're below what we were in 2016 as far as the slice of the pie that we're getting from shared revenue versus all our other revenue. So if you compare 2016 to 2024, we were at 22%. Now we're down under 21% in shared revenue.
And you may have heard me say that even the 11,500,000 figure is really about what we were getting in 1992. So it's, it's much appreciated. And if you talk to a legislator, please thank them. But the reality is, from our 30,000-foot view, we're back to, on a percentage basis, we're back to 2019. And on a dollar basis, we're back to 1992.
Okay, so our shared revenue up 20%. How much of a loss do we have in the personal property tax?
We won't know that until 2025 because for 2024, we will still collect personal.
Oh, okay.
Yep. This law doesn't come into play until we get our payment in '24 and then the personal property component of that will fall off in 2025.
It's about 4% of our total property tax take right now. Personal property taxes, about 4% of it.
So in 2020, I was looking forward. So in 2025, is there some kind of add more shared revenue to make up for that loss then?
Yes, it'll be called something else, but it'll be based on the personal property report that we provide them for this year. We're going to give them a report on what our personal property value is. That'll be the basis for our payment in 2025. And then it will be frozen for all time. So we won't see an increase in that amount. Is that why you were kind of going?
Well.
You were hedging.
Some of the finer points of what they call Act 12, which is what enacted it to this legislation, is still being worked out. Julie, myself, and Haley will be attending a seminar put on by elders later in September, end of September, early October. We'll learn a little bit more about some of the details. There's also some other language on the Tax Income District side of things that we'll have to monitor as we go forward. But yeah, as far as 2024, will be the same thing. But we have some other issues going on with the levy that I'm going to talk about in just a few slides, just to kind of get you in perspective with that.
And just one more thing, you're going to see this consistently talked about. We made an assumption of 3% increase in the levy. And that's how we want to go into it and you'll see what the impact of that is. But we've been doing 4% to 6% the last few years. And I would blame that entirely on the fact that we did not get shared revenue all those years. I think, and this is just my take on it, and Russ and I have talked about this. I think there's an expectation from the public that now that we're finally getting some relief on the shared revenue side, that the property taxpayers should get some dividend on that. So we're going with 3%. And that's going to have an impact as you'll see. But I just want you to keep that 3% in your mind as we're going through because consistently, we're going to use that for this, for modeling purposes. And the council has every right to say, Mark, I want it at 1, 2, or 10. You can say any of those. I'm guessing closer to the 3 than the 10, but it's still ultimately your call. But we're going with 3 as we come out of the gate.
So anything else as far as asked tax levy, shared revenue, total general fund revenue? Linear graph, just kind of putting this all in perspective. And again, going back to 2016, not any movement on shared revenue. The levy had some growth and then the green is the total, you know, including other revenue. Again, if you were to look at 2016 to 2024, this is kind of interesting. Shared revenue is the blue slice. Again, went from 23% of the pie to 21%. The levy was as low as 37% and now it's 44%. So more of the burden is being picked up by property taxes. And as we try to stay up with other revenues, fines, fees, fines of forfeitures, fees, other miscellaneous revenue, it's becoming a smaller piece of the pie. We're down to about a third. So that's just kind of a quick snapshot. Now, I'm going to just discombobulate it with a bunch of numbers real quick. What I was trying to show is, here are some of the changes in the levy going back. 1%, 4%, 4%, 2, 4, 4, 3, 2, 2, 2, 4, and 4. So those are levy increases. The other thing is looking at increases in our assessed valuation from $3.7 billion to $4 billion. And here are the increases each year. Our assessed valuation is not going up at the same rate as the real estate market is going. The equalized value is a way of trying to represent what our value is based on sales that occur. And while we had no growth in equalized value for a number of years, in the most recent years, we've had some, some more steady growth. 3%, 3%, 5, 8, and now 10%. And we have some estimates that will be in that 8 to 10% in 2024. So in addition to the value, I also have rate information up there and then some of the changes. So here's what's happening with the rate to the taxpayers when we take our levy and spread it off across the value.
And if you look at the equalized value from 2013, it was about 3 billion, 769 million. And you take a look at the assessed value at that same year, 3 billion, 738 million. They were really, really close. But as you can see.
Here's actually, if you take.
There you go.
If you actually take the value, this is the assessed to equalized value. The blue is the assessed value. And like what Mark was trying to tell you, it is from 2014 to 2018-ish, maybe 2017. We're relatively close. With the increase in real estate values, our equalized value is jumping up much faster rate than our assessed value. What that means is the tax rate is just based on levy divided by valuation. It comes up with a rate per thousand. And so the assessed rate is going up faster while our equalized rate is going down. Does that make sense to folks? You pay your tax bill on the assessed value. But the equalize is kind of representing market conditions.
So as our levy's gone up, our assessed rate goes up because there's not much been growth, there's not been much growth in the assessed. When we do a revale and we get ourselves back towards equalized value.
Yeah, these two bars should be the same. And that should happen in '25 because the value should, the revale should take an effect in 2024, but it won't be for the '25 budget.
But the tax rate should come down.
Tax rate should plummet.
Let me show this another way because this is just value. This is just value. Here, let's look at the rates. The blue again is the assessed rate. And the assessed rate is up to over $12. But if you look at the equalized rate, it's between 9 and 950. So that gap has really sprung up as value is growing faster on the equalized side than the assessed side. But taxpayers are paying on the assessed value.
So there'll be a lot of nervous people when the revale's done because, oh my gosh, my value has gone up 20%. My taxes are going up 20%. That's the fear. The reality is, is it's the old adage of a rising tide raises all ships. If the average is 20% and you're greater than that average, then you're probably going to see an increase compared to others. But if your increase is only 15% when everybody else is going up 20%, you're probably going to see a net decrease. It's all going to depend on where you are relative to the average increase. But there'll be, clearly, there'll be an increase in values, but that doesn't translate to an increase in taxes. Ultimately, it comes down to what you said is the levy.
Do we have any idea what the school district or the county are going to be doing this year at all? Do you know if they are projecting increases?
I do not know at this point.
Okay.
With the debt on the schools, probably a little bump. And I would guess with the county frozen or maybe even a little down.
Yeah, this is just municipal.
Crystal ball, crystal ball talking.
Sure.
Any other questions on rates? So now, some personnel assumptions. And John or Michelle, you can jump in if you want to add any comments. Let me just cover a few points real quickly. We have a number of bargaining units. I think pretty much all bargaining units expire at the end of 2023. I have put in some discretionary allowance and you'll see that on the last slide. But the number you have to keep in mind for each 1% across-the-board increase for all employees costs about $472,500 for each 1%. So if you do an adjustment other than, you know, 1% would be $472,500. If it's something other than 1%, you just, you know, if it's 3% multiplied by 3, whatever you work out. And that's something that I know you guys have talked about, some bargaining positions. We're not here to talk about bargaining positions tonight. I'm trying to give you what are some of the assumptions and how that could play into the budget for 2024. Is that a fair statement, John?
Yep.
Is there anything else you want to talk about wages?
No, not really.
Thanks, John. So right now, we anticipate our health insurance, we think, will be no more than 5. We were hoping it could be less than 5. At 5% of, an increase in health insurance premiums represents about $470,000 as well. And that's for 5%. If it comes in less than that, that number will be adjusted down. But right now, the best numbers we have is that our health insurance could go up as high as 5%.
Just a quick thing, you know, thanks to the council, the previous councils for allowing us to invest in the clinic, the employee clinic that we participate in with the school district and the county. You know, that's been very successful for us and for the partners. And although the market trend is higher than 5, you know, we have enjoyed for several years prior to this, in some cases decreases because we were able to secure fully insured health insurance from the marketplace because they wanted to utilize us and showcase us because of our clinic. But now we are self-insured again and we had a pretty significant increase last year. But, you know, it stabilized quite a bit and we're back to below the industry standard. So we're grateful that the council was willing to take a chance on that. And I think it's really, and our employees, you know, patronizing the clinic, that's really helped us, so.
The next slide is the cost of health insurance per employee per year. I got razzed a little bit what P E P Y was when we were doing the preliminary work on this. So per employee per year, our actual cost is in the blue. Yeah, copy. The national trend is in the kind of orange line. So we're trending below national trends, which is still good.
Yeah, and I think if you look at that, those columns on the bottom, I know they're hard to read on the screen, but if you can look at them on the bottom, you can see that how our costs actually decreased there. You know, going from 2015 to 2018 and 2019 and even 2020, we were much below what we were in 2015. And then, you know, slowly trended up to a point where we were finally over our 2015 cost actually in 2022, which is pretty unheard of in regard to health insurance costs. I think for people that know, you know, with your own family, if you have health insurance, it's been escalating quite a bit. So, and then you can see the trend, kind of the industry standard on the bottom and how we compare to the industry standards. So again, you know, I think the employees are doing a good job and I think the council's support of the clinic has really helped us.
So we talked a little bit about wages and health insurance. So again, if we look at 2023 wages, the first column represents our general fund and general fund supported operation. So general fund, supported means museum, library, the pool, all the things that have tax levy going into it. There's actually a slide that I show with our levy-supported funds in just a little bit to help you understand that. Basically, with our current compensation plan, we have kind of a combination of steps. And then, once you get to the last step, there's performance-based pay. This is just factoring in all of the known step adjustments for people that are in different levels and different steps. So this is really kind of non-discretionary to the council because they're, based on our compensation plan, we're kind of locked into that. So if we do nothing other than no cost of living adjustments or anything else, people are progressing through the steps. We're looking with wages and then the wage-related benefits, FICA, WRS, life insurance. We're looking at about a 2.8% increase or about $1.1 million in our general fund and general fund supported operation. More than just the general fund. If we look at our other non-general fund-supported budgets, including utilities, water, sewer, transit, and inspections, that number is a little bit different, but those are the costs breaking down those two categories.
So for context, out of a $52.2 million general fund, 40.4 million of that is people.
Correct. But that 40 million also includes, the $50 million is general fund. The $40 million people cost is more than just a general fund because it also includes library, museum, the pool, all those other activities that we account in other funds. So it's a little bit.
But the impacts are levy.
Yeah, the 40, yeah. The 40 to 50 is not a real fair comparison, but it's pretty close. It's probably more like 40 to 60 million if you combine all those other budgets.
The real purpose of this slide, we've used this for several years, is to point out that 2.87% is something that is essentially non-discretionary. The WRS, for example, the rates, the rate of WRS is going up one or two points.
Something like that at the tick.
There's different categories and then the state gives us an adjusted amount. So we base it on that.
And the rate for non-protective service is different than protective service.
And because of the stock market didn't do well in '22, that's what these rates, that is all based on our experience in '22. So you're seeing that increase, you know, even compared to the wages, the WRS increase is even more substantial. And that's just because that's the nature of the beast. The market's doing better this year. If it were to continue, you might see actually a tick down the following year. And that's just, that's just how that rolls. But the other thing I would say, even though 2.87 looks like a lot, when somebody retires, they're typically at the very high end of the wage scale. And we replace them typically with somebody at the lowest end of the wage scale. So while they may, we don't necessarily see that down until after they actually get hired back. And then they start a climb because at the low point, they're going to get a bigger raise than say somebody at the higher end of the scale. So I wouldn't be too intimidated by the 2.87, but we have to point it out to you.
And that 9% for the non-general fund, is that an increase in positions supported by our utilities?
Yeah. There's no, no, there's no increase in position. This is just increase in steps within that grouping. What we do is we ask the. What we do is we ask departments if they're going to ask for more people to go through that budget enhancement process. And I know there was a lot of discussion last year with our budget enhancements and how that was recommended or passed along to city council, but that'll be another discussion point. So the point that we're trying to get here is we're locked into certain wage adjustments, whether we do any cost of living increase or not.
And just one other thing to add that I, I think these guys described it well. The, you know, FICA is just social security and Medicare. And so FICA, WRS and life, they're all kind of a compounding effect. So the more wages that you provide, then the more is provided from each one of those areas too.
But I guess, yeah, my question was with the, I mean, that's quite a difference between the, the increase in wages and benefits, the general fund supported versus the non-general fund, which I think is, I assume is primarily utilities.
Yes.
Is that just more senior employees there or what?
I think some of it may have also been, we did some personnel increases mid-year. So you don't see a full impact of the year until your budget for the full year. So it was budgeted like at half a year for '23, full budget at '24. Because your observation, I, I, I didn't, I should have thought to ask the question yesterday.
Yeah.
But I think that's part of it, that there's some personnel that, we got a full year of them, so we may have only had.
Water filtration, I believe we filled that mid-year, for example. It was a budgeted add, but not until summer. So some of those things might be, you know, actual costs.
I think too, Mike, I think it's, it's, it looks a little bigger too because it's a smaller number. I mean, you can see on the bottom that, you know, amalgamated the entire grand total is like 4.35, even though you got the big nine.
I get that. I get that. And any shifts though from general fund supported to?
Shouldn't be.
Utilities supported?
There shouldn't be anything in there. And again, some of this is, we're trying to, we're using a little bit of new software for our budgeting purposes that we're doing for projections. So I know that we're still fine tuning some of those projections in our budgeting software. So some of that might be tied to that. This is, again, just kind of showing you, we've gone through a process to try to estimate what those increases are going to be. There may be some fine tuning on that before we get the final budget presented to you.
Thank you.
So that was people. And again, we had talked about this a number of times and we talked about it at the last council meeting with our capital improvement plan. This is the exact same sheet that you've seen in that first workshop. We talked about capital improvement, we talked about debt. What I just want to point out real quick is, in talking with the city manager, if going forward, we're projecting that this equalized value would increase at 5% per year, starting in our budget and, and moving forward. And going into 2034, the debt is what we, will be coming off the books and what we're looking to add. We are looking to add in 2024, $18.4 million. That was in the CIP. We also talked about $22 million if we talk about special assessments, creating a floor for special assessments, eliminating the special assessment for sidewalk reconstruction. And right now, if we take on that as debt at 22.5. And then we talked about filling some of our facility needs and in 2031, going back down to $20 million. So those are all the assumptions that went into this graph. And if we look at 2024, we're just above 40%, 41.8, going down to 35% in 2034. Again, I apologize, the numbers are really small. Probably the best way of looking at that is looking at a linear graph on our percent of debt limit. Again, this is just a percentage of where we're at with the state allowable issuance of debt. And that ratio is shrinking. Our goal is to get that below 40% right now. We will probably get there in 2028, 2029 and we'll be below that going forward, based on those assumptions that I had in those finer detailed numbers. But the big picture is our percent of debt limit is going down. What does that mean? Again, the capacity to issue debt is measured, is measured off of our equalized value. So as our equalized value grows, our ability to take on debt increases. So if you go out into the future, that difference between what our debt limit is at the end of the year versus what we can issue widens, which is good. So our goal is to stay at that 40%, kind of flatten that out. But our equalized value is growing, so that gap between what we can issue and what we plan on issuing becomes wider. Now, again, I apologize for some of the word, the text gets a little small when you do this PowerPoint. But I, what I really wanted to get to is, we spent a lot of time talking about our general fund, which covers all our basic operations. But as you can see, we have other levies that go into supporting other operations, including the museum, which is kind of a light gray, street lighting and yellow. Debt services is other huge, more royal blue. Our green is garbage collection and disposal, that, that's a separate sanitation fund. We have senior services, we have libraries, cemetery, the amphitheater, the water park or pool, rental inspections and our equipment replacement fund and go transit has support. So all of these funds make up where the levy dollars go. It's just not general fund, but general fund is the major portion of the levy. So you can, this is the total levy from '21, '22 and '23. Obviously, you haven't adopted the '24 levy yet, but this is just kind of a recap of where the levies are for all the different funds to date.
Sorry, it's a dumb question. Debt service fund, is that just interest payments?
Nope, it's principal and interest payments.
Principal and interest.
Not a dumb question, it's a very good question. What we do is we account for our debt service outside the general fund. So when you issue debt in 2023, if it's a 10-year bond or a 20-year, 20-year bond or a 10-year note, we spread that out going forward for 10 or 20 years. When you pass that resolution, you're making an irrepealable tax levy into the future. It's the only time where a current city council can make commitment for future city councils. So our debt payments in 2024 is a collection of all of the other previous commitments made by city councils to issue debt from the last basically 20 years. It might be 10 years and so.
It's almost exclusively funded with the tax levy. There are a few little revenues that come in every once in a while, but the bulk of that.
For general obligation.
Interest payment is levy.
Now, in addition to that debt service payment, there's also debt service that's paid for by utility revenue. So like water revenue will pay for water debt, sanitary sewer will pay for sanitary or sewer debt, stormwater pays for stormwater debt. So those are utility debts that are in addition to this general obligation debt. I just want to make sure everybody understands. Any other questions on the levy? Trying to keep things moving. So here's where we get to. Current levy is 45.7. That was for this year. I have built into assumption that our assessed value based on the preliminary numbers, while our equalized value is going up 10, 8, 10%, our assessed value is probably going to go up about a percent, just based on what I know today. And that could change a little bit, but it's right around a percent. So if we did nothing with the levy and we had a 1% growth in assessed value, our rate would actually go down 10 cents from 1211 to 1202 or around that, 10, 9, 10 cents. These are just, just various scenarios. If we had a 1% increase in the total levy, it would be 46 million bucks. 2%, 46.6, all the way down. Now, Mark told me to take off the highlight and I forgot, listen, I'm sorry, Mark. The high, the reason it's highlighted is that number of 48,694 ties to a 2.964 increase in the levy. And to do that, we have things outside of our control right now. If nothing else happens in 2024, we're anticipating debt service in 2024 is going to be $1.3 million more than it was in our '23 budget. So we got to add.
And all this stuff comes from those previous slides.
Correct.
Those were all building.
So I'm going to just explain that. The 1.1 is that non-discretionary levy and levy supported wages. So total non-discretionary is 2.5. We have discretionary increases. You can decide, you know, what do you want to do for wages? I just put in a number of 1.8 and that's just based on a certain percentage adjustment.
Three and a half percent?
Rather not go into that right now because we're still doing negotiations with the collective bargaining.
Sure, yep.
So 1.1.89 is the number I have right now in my assumptions to get to that 6.4 or 6.5% increase. So in addition, we got the health insurance increase of $470,000, increase in spending of 4.8. Now, if you reduce that levy demand by our net increase in shared revenue, saying shared revenue can cover some of this. And if the shared revenue increase was 1.9, our net increase in a potential levy is 2.9. That 2.9 goes up to the formula, if we did nothing else, at a very maximum amount, you could be looking at a 6.4% increase in the levy. Now, you're not making a decision tonight on that levy number. You can provide some direction to staff. If you want that number to be 3% or 2% or 4% or whatever number you want to pick, that's the amount of increase we'd have to work with. So if you said to the city manager, we're levy, we're, we're, we think we can live with a 3% levy increase and this is important for us in trying to balance a budget. So if we say we're comfortable with a 3% levy increase, we can increase our expenditures or levy by 1.371, which is different than a 2.9. So some of these things we can still work with, but we wanted to give you a picture of where we're at today, what might be out there and asking you to at least start thinking about what kind of levy you think you might be able to support.
We've made no other assumptions on revenues. I know the library has already told me that they are expecting a decrease in some of the county support. We're expecting an increase in transportation aids. That was part of Act 12, that, that there was some stuff in there. So there'll be ups and downs and over the next few weeks, we'll be tightening up those revenues. But we've, we isolated the two largest revenue sources, property tax, shared revenue. And so I, I mentioned the 3%, which is only generating 1,371. As you see kind of halfway down at the 3%. But right now, we need 2.9. So we got, we got a $1.6 million gap that we got to fill before we present you with a balanced budget, which we will. You will get a balanced budget, but now you see kind of what we're, we're up against. I know there's a lot of excitement with shared revenue, but one of the things that I discussed at the chief executive institute last week with other city managers and mayors is like, we're really appreciative of the shared revenue increase, but because it's been so late in coming, we got some stuff to backfill after all these years. So we're going to, it's going to be tight, we're going to have to figure that out. But I wanted you to know that I'm going in with a 3% assumption. And if you feel differently, please let me know. But we're going to present you with a balanced budget in about 40 days. And this is what, this is what we've got, this is what we got to address over the next 40 days.
So at 3%, the 1.3, just to carry that over with that 1% increase in the assessed value, you'd be looking at a municipal tax rate of $12.38 or 26 cents increase over what the current municipal rate is.
All right, math question. Since, just looking at these numbers, like you have the 4% comes up to 1.82, whatever. That is about what the discretionary wage allowance that you put in there was. So that would basically wipe out that hole.
Well, 4% increase in the levy would just cover.
Would just cover that.
The discretionary wage increase. That's a good observation. It just gives you an idea, it gives you something to keep in perspective.
But then also, as Mark, as the city manager just told us, we haven't finalized all of the other revenue numbers and expenditure numbers. This is just looking at, if you just look at the, the base, the majority of our budget, as council member Ford just mentioned, is people. And people is wages and benefits. And we are have, we're locked into some of it, but some of it, we have some discretion. But we also have other components that meet this. And I know in the past, I got accused of kind of giving you this doom and gloom forecast because we always come in and figure out a way of balancing the budget in what you want to set up as some parameters. And we can do that. I'm just trying to get you in a position where you're understanding some of the pressures that are going to be facing us to give you a balanced budget. Another way of looking, using that same logic, is that you'll take a look at the increase in debt service, which is one of those that is put upon you from prior councils. That just happens to match up with 3%.
Sure.
So you can use it for, well, that'd cover this, that would cover that. Yeah, but the bottom line is, right now, we need about 2.9 million. We got to figure out how we're going to balance that.
Mayor was going to say something, but I don't know if he was.
Probably choking at the 6.4.
Well, sorry, I'm one of those that has always criticized the doom and gloom.
That's okay.
That's the newspaper story everyone remembers, not when we come back. So I don't think it, I don't think it does us any favors. But I would just say that the last 10 years, you average out our increases to the tax levy is 4.118%. I think given the fact that we have this new revenue coming in, it's reasonable for us to be below that and I really like the 3% baseline that you shared. And I guess a follow-up question, do we, what's our vacant position situation?
Michelle, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, we, we've been hovering around 30 vacancies throughout the year. So we, we do expect that we will have a vacancy factor in our wages. But when they budget, they do budget for full employment. You know, when, when our finance department puts those together.
Right, and as Russ said earlier, there's no salary savings that have been factored into the, the 2023 stuff that he talked about earlier. And we have just roughly about 650 full-time employees, is that right, Michelle?
I'd say more than like 620-ish full-time, but yeah.
Thank you.
Mike's math works for me. You know, without the shared revenue, I'll be doom and gloom for a second. Without that shared revenue increase of 1.9, you know, 4.8 million dollar increase, you know, we'd be.
10%.
7%. I wouldn't be able to go to the taxpayers and ask for that.
Well, we weren't asking you to do that.
No, no, but I'm just, I'm playing doom and gloom for a second.
Oh, yeah.
So without that 1.9, that's a, that's a big difference. So I'm appreciative of that from the state level, of course, but, but Mike's math roughly works for me. In that 3% range. I'm going to ask a few questions.
It's okay, it's what we're here for.
So is, we have to do debt service. Wage and wage benefits, those are, those were the, like the stuff from the state, right? The WRS.
WRS and FICA.
And steps.
So that's, and steps.
Steps that are already created.
So that, that stuff we have to do as well. So really what we're looking at is wage allowance and if we want to increase our health insurance because we're self-funded, so we can kind of control if we increase that or not, but it's probably.
it's probably more of a, we need to do that rather than, than not.
Right, and, uh, yes, we do need to do it.
So really what we're talking about then is, is wages, and, I mean, I would feel really uncomfortable giving you guys a number without knowing what our, our increased staff is gonna be. I, ideally, I'd like them to match what our unions are gonna get. Uh, so I mean, I, I can't, I can't sit here and give you a number.
And, and we're, yeah, the, the discussions with HR folks and where we end up with negotiating collective bargaining agreements is kind of outside of this budget exercise this evening. Um, and I think what I wanna, I think what the city manager was looking for is kind of a flavor of where's a, a good landing spot. In the past, this has worked out really well, because, you know, we've had discussions, I can live with a certain increase in levy, I can live with no increase in levy, I can really, you know, I can support, you know, a modest increase based on certain factors. And again, all of the other revenue components and expenditure components that are not related to wages, we still have to look at. And we're, we're not there where we can give you that balanced budget yet, but we're starting to take all of the requests, um, we do our internal review with the city manager.
Start next week.
And we, we do.
Yeah, we haven't even done a single one yet.
Yeah, we do, um, what we can to hold the line on what those increases could come to, um, you know, and, and those type of things. Um, but at this point, we're just kind of giving you a snapshot of where we're at.
And just to, to add on to your question, Joe, you know, the discretionary wage allowance, they, they need to put a, a number in, so they can come up with all the rest of the numbers, but, you know, we have to go through that collective bargaining process, and, you know, who knows where we're gonna end up with that. So that number is an unknown, and with the health insurance increase, you know, we have a, we have a projection to date that's based on that number, but we have some other, um, information that we're gonna receive, because we take a look at a, an entire time period, and we need to look at all those claims, and those are still being calculated, so that number could actually change also. We believe it won't go higher than five, but, you know, maybe it might go lower, but we'll see how it all comes out when we get the report.
We have a, a separate fund for our health insurance, and that, that's kind of what you think we're referring to, and we need to maintain a fund balance in the range of two to two-and-a-half million for cash flow purposes. And if we have a bad year, we got, it helps cushion that. If we're having a good year, and it seems like some of that's based, some of that five percent is based on a good experience year, which is good news, let's say we were upwards of two-point-seven million, well, then we might have a cushion of like two-hundred-thousand dollars if we could drop it down to two-five. I wouldn't drop it down to two, because then you have a bad year and you swing, and we've had those, those years when, when we previously had the self-insured fund. So we'll look at the self-insured fund, and we might be able to say, well, we might be able to temper that increase with that. If the numbers get a, a little better over the next couple of months.
Right.
We can do that. So that's part of the forty-day wait, is are there little things we can do?
Tweak, you know.
Tweak to make it happen. So, I mean, would I love that increase to go away? Yeah, because that's four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand in savings that we can apply and give ourselves some relief, and all, and all the unknown revenue sources that we haven't even plugged in yet. So we'll see where those goes, but.
So.
Some go up, some go down.
For the, for the newer council members, uh, the discretionary wage allowance, we're not asking you to commit to a certain percentage. Um, what we do and what we've worked successfully in the past, because some of those negotiations will occur after with our budgets been adopted, um, we'll put a dollar amount in a contingency line item to represent enough to cover what kind of direction council's given us to work for as far as collective bargaining agreements and non-represented employees. So, um, the, this nondiscretionary adjustments are gonna be built into our wage calculations and our object code that covers payroll costs, and then we have benefit object codes that cover all of the benefit costs. So that, uh, wage and benefits of one-point-one-six for general fund, a general fund levy-supported numbers will be, um, in the payroll expense for each of the funds, and we'll have an allotment for, uh, the contingency.
If you got a question, please.
So I just want to say something to give Mayor McGraw something not to like. Um, no, so I was going, um, with the last column there, you know, the impact on a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and that's really where, where people feel it is, because it's, you know, it's not the percent more that they have to pay, it's the dollars more. And so I just kind of think of it as, um, fifty dollars on a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar assessment, which worked out to three-point-seven-seven. Um, so that would be, my comfortability is, is, you know, around fifty bucks on that kind of range. So three-point-seven-seven is what I would throw out there. You know, we can talk about it or not, but that's where I was at.
Yeah, and other years councils, various councils have asked me to, well, what is two-and-a-half, what is three-and-a-half, what is, you know, I can run all the scenarios you want, but for tonight, I just did round percentages.
Really, for, for everybody here, it's just about giving some guidance, giving them the, the parameters of what, what Mark and Russ keep, keep working at over the next sixty days to keep polishing the budget, because at the end of October, about sixty days from now, we meet again, that they're gonna give us a balanced budget that, that we gotta start discussing, you know, operationally and capital, of course, so.
For the newer council members, I, I want to offer you some, um, hopeful perspective. Russ and I, over the last few years, have been looking at a one-and-a-half to two-million-dollar deficit at this juncture here. So this is, Matt, Mike, and Lindsay are batting an eye, because, oh, you guys have said this before, Paul, this isn't much different than the last time you were on council. So we'll close the gap, um, and we'll figure out some creative ways to do it, um, but, you know, it's not unusual to have this type of gap, because we're making some assumptions here that, you know, we hope, uh, we can tighten up and save some money, but there's no guarantee. Um, and sometimes where we find the money, where we find the savings and close the gap is not necessarily what we thought of. If, if we did, we would have put it in the assumptions anyway, but it'll be balanced, as, as, as the mayor said.
And, and my comment was only, I mean, three percent sounds amazing, but if we're gonna shortchange our staff, I'm perfectly fine with six percent. I really, I, I think it's short-sighted of us in this, like, employment market to not, uh, not wanting to, to make sure we're paying them well, I guess is my only point. I'd like to see where the numbers come back, I, fifty bucks sounds awesome too, but I guess I just don't have a, a good number to throw at you.
I think somewhere with Carl and, and Joe, um, about four percent I could do.
I agree with that as well.
All right, so we kind of laid the groundwork for some of the budget things, but the other thing we wanted to spend some time this evening on is special assessment. And we've talked about these a couple of times and at city council meetings. Um, I guess when I was talking to the city manager and Public Works Director Robbie, you know, one of the things we talked about is, what is the goal of council as far as special assessments? And I think these are two different things. We've kind of looked at providing some partial relief on special assessments, but leaving the instrument in place. Um, but we also have kind of gotten the feel from some of the discussions that some, maybe not all, or at least a couple, or have, have desires to eliminate all street assessments. And we assume that we think it's good policy to continue with the utility, um, and we're actually have to do the utilities kind of separate. Um, new users getting in, new infrastructures face some of that, that carrying cost of, of the laterals, you know, and things that get installed into the ground. The assessments don't cover maintenance stuff, they just cover expansion of existing.
From a utility standpoint, correct.
So, you know, is your goal, plain and simple, eliminate all street assessments? Or is your goal, what we've been kind of working on, you know, let's provide some relief and keep the mechanism in place? And I guess that's one of the things we wanted to start some discussion on. Um, we're not gonna, whatever you decide tonight is, is not gonna be formal action until we come back to you, um, with that specific recommendation, but, um, as we go forward in looking at debt, as we go forward in looking at cost, if our goal is to provide some relief and leave the instrument in place, I think there's a separate set of discussion points for you to think about versus eliminating completely.
James, I don't know if you got any other comments on that?
No, I think that about sums up our conversation. We're, we're trying to figure out, um, you know, what set of options we want to present, and we, we kind of need to understand the goal a little bit more, so we can give you some options to talk about and, and try to pick from.
And I think part of that came from the discussion with the, the second and third bullet. As we were putting those forward, we really discovered, this is really, we're just talking about partial relief, and there, at one point, there was discussion about doing full relief, and we're like, that's a fundamental question, and that's why I teased you at the end of last meeting, there was your, there, there was your parting homework thought, uh, so, but that does have a big impact on what strategies we employ, and we never asked you that, that way. And I know from talking to some of you individually, there are differing opinions on that, and I would say that none of your opinions are wrong, but they're somewhat in conflict with one another. So as we talk and move forward, where do we really want to get to? So I, I, I'll leave it to the mayor to lead the discussion, uh, with your fellow council members.
No, I, I appreciate that this is the way you guys framed it. We, we talked, I forget how many months ago when we met, and that, I brought that question up too. Um, and I'll take ownership of, of part of that, because over the last several years, kind of loved the discussion. Um, I'll see, I'll take the word kind of out of it, I did, I did lead the discussion for several years on this one, um, and I didn't ask that question. And that could be part of the reason that there's no answer or no decision already have been made, um, or no changes. So it's a, it is a good spot to start, um, you know, is there interest in changing from what we have now to something different? That's the first good question. Two, partial relief, full relief is probably the secondary question. Um, and then there's more nuances after that, right? Commercial, institutional included, not included, all residential, partial residential, there's nuances after that, but the two core, core questions are probably, are you interested in changing from what we currently do, and full or partial? And then that dictates probably the rest of the conversation. For me, I'll start it off, ain't gonna be any surprise, I'm still in favor of full, but it becomes increasingly clear it is more difficult to try to accomplish that. Um, and, you know, full, full, uh, relief is for all concrete, sidewalks, full reconstructions, um, as Finance Director Van Gopel mentioned, you know, utilities underground, that's not on the table. This is, this is still just concrete, that's, I guess is the easiest way to put it. And I have my own, you know, own considerations on some of the other nuances, but that's where I kind of stand on that. I do still believe that our current system is flawed, um, it's not equitable, and there's gotta be a better way. I don't know if anybody else, who else wants to go, but go right ahead.
I, I would disagree with your character of resolution of flawed, I'd go with imporant for the current situation. So answer number one, yes, I think we owe it to everybody to try to come up with a different system. Uh, I am in agreement with you on trying to do full, uh, relief or, or elimination of the assessments as described on the table.
So I am also in agreement of full, but understanding that we are limited in our options. So if it's a, we are working towards full, but in the meantime have kind of a, a partial approach with a kind of range of funding sources and ways that we do that.
Yep, I, I agree. I would, I think full has always been the goal, but it's just been costly, right? Uh, and then I guess, for my knowledge, uh, if we're saying just concrete, someone's road gets replaced in front of their house, do they get a special assessment then for the utilities underground? Are they gonna still be getting a special assessment bill, I assume?
Yeah, there would be, um, if there's existing utility mains in place, the replacement of those are not charged, but replacement of laterals would be.
The personal ladder?
Yes, so typically, sewer lateral replacement is, is shared fifty-fifty, uh, water service is the city's responsibility to the curb stop, um, and then most places do not have a storm lateral, so there'd be a charge for a new storm lateral, um, which by current policy is very heavily subsidized by the stormwater utility. Um, and then where we have situations like we're expanding our utility service on the west side right now, that's where, you know, as Russ pointed out, new mains, uh, being installed from a sewer and water standpoint, you know, the Public Service Commission requires the utility to be made whole on the installation of those new mains, uh, from a water standpoint, and our policy for our sewer utility has always mirrored what the Public Service Commission requires for water.
Sure, and, and I, I think from a, like, our own personal philosophy of that, I, I like that, because, I mean, you're really only charging people for stuff that directly benefits them, right? I mean, laterals and then new, new stuff that's going, and I think with a special assessment, I agree a little bit with Matt, I don't like them, I think they're a little bit inequitable, because everybody uses, but that's just the way we kind of pay for it right now, so, uh, but I'll get off my, my pulpit.
Go for it, Paul. Ms. Lakeisha, you got?
I'll keep it brief, I'm in favor of full.
Um, well, for what it's worth, I think we need to be careful here. I mean, it's always nice to, wanna do all of these things that we're talking about here, paying for full special assessments, salary increases, capital projects, and then someone's gotta pay for it in the end. And Mark, you're talking about a three percent, uh, you know, keeping it around there, and we're talking now about four to six percent increase. We do also have to remember that the school district, I mean, we sent out the, the tax bill, and again, perceptions are, this is our tax bill, and when we have our good friends at the school district coming up with ten percent increases on any given year, and we don't know what we're, what they're gonna do for next year, uh, we have that to deal with, and then the average taxpayer going out, and gas prices, electric prices, grocery prices, the interest rates that they have to pay, you know, then when it comes, when it comes down to sending the bill out, you know, here's, here's what you get, and I, the full special assessments, I said at the council meeting, there's no way I would ever support that, that's a slap in the face to those individuals that had this bad system that we have now, I think it needs to be changed, there's no doubt about that. Um, and as the mayor said, there's different ways that we're looking at, at doing that, so I'm, I'm completely in, in favor of coming up with some scenario there, but I, I would not vote for a budget where we are gonna fully fund special assessments.
Okay, I mean, my position's been, been consistent, I think, so it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone, but probably come at it a little differently. Uh, for me, it's primarily an equity argument. There's a hundred-and-ninety-one, I think cities and villages, a hundred-and-forty of them use special assessments, um, so we're not an outlier in the fact that we have special assessments, we're an outlier in the fact that we're in the top five consistently in the, uh, in the state in terms of our special assessments per capita. Um, to me, that's what's unacceptable. The equity argument is we need to be in the meaty part of that curve and substantially reduce, uh, our special assessments per capita, so we're closer to that median, and we're no longer an outlier. Uh, and the second big inequity to me is, um, the handful of residents that we are pricing out of house and home. Um, I, I call those the nightmare assessments, Frankenstein assessments, all kinds of catchy things that don't catch on, so they're not catchy. Um, but to me, that, that's really important, and I know that I, I, I can read the room, I know that people are not, are much more in favor of a floor, um, but I know there's other municipalities that will do things around means testing, uh, to make sure that people have some relief when they have a special assessments that's disproportionately high compared to their property value and/or their income. Um, and I don't think that that is actually hugely expensive ass. Um, I think we need to see the numbers about how many of these, these nightmare assessments actually occur, uh, but to me, those are the two biggest things. Can we, can we get rid of those nightmare assessments, and can we bring our special assessments per capita in, you know, somewhere near the average in, in Wisconsin? And certainly getting rid of them, that accomplishes both those goals, so I'm not gonna be voting against the ability to get rid of them, but I do think that, that Paul makes a reasonable point there, that we have to be cognizant of the fact that we live in a, in a, in a state where our revenue sources are incredibly constricted, and once we take one off the table, it's something we're not gonna be able to go back and try to use again. Um, so, I mean, the trade-off's gonna be, we're gonna have a significantly higher tax levy in perpetuity. Um, that's just something to keep in mind. Uh, but like I said, those are my two goals, they're more, I guess, philosophical, um, as opposed to just, you know, one or the other, it's not a binary thing, but that's where I'm at.
How in depth do you want us to go on this tonight in terms of direction? At 7:10 or 6:10?
Midnight, I think.
I've got time.
We budgeted this time until seven o'clock. So if you want to spend the next 40 minutes or so, we're happy to kind of field questions. And, and if that leads you anywhere.
I, I don't have it in front of me. If I remember correctly, the price tag for what we laid on the table is about five and a half million. Is that correct? For
For the sidewalk and the, the floor was about two and a half for next year.
That was, yeah, that was the other, the reduction, but the full package of what we're talking about right now.
Ooh, I didn't bring that number with me, but I would say you're probably in the ballpark. If I remember correctly, I'd have to pull that out.
Four to five. Did the cost eliminate special assessments for streets? And sidewalks is, yeah, pushing to five million bucks a year. And if you take a look at the second slide on page eight, what Mr. Van Gopel did was plugged in the two and a half million into that scenario.
Straight into debt.
Straight into debt. Yeah. So assuming
Debt projection.
No. Assuming the floor, assuming the sidewalk. Yeah. Well, let's do this. Slide 16. Let's do this instead. Let me do this.
Oh, we're going to go live.
Of course.
Do you need to save that first?
Just don't save it. All we do is we just don't save it. So, um, what was the question again? I'm sorry. I was trying to get through it. You basically added two and a half million dollars. We were doing 20. And then we said, well, if we adopt this, let's go 22 and a half for the rest of the decade and see where we land. And you know, Do you need, need me to make these numbers bigger? How's that?
I guess if I wanted to clarify my opinion a little bit, I'm not willing to add two and a half more million dollars to that to get full. I guess is, full is awesome. If someone was like, Joe, do you want a piece of cake or not a piece of cake? I'm going to say piece of cake. But I, I would like to get full, but I, I would rather not have to increase the CIP to do that.
So on the subject, is there a funding source other than just dumping it onto here that would get us from the partial to the full?
And that's some of why we wanted to have this discussion tonight. So we could kind of see where everybody's thoughts were at. So we could really start kind of developing those options and opportunities to present that information to you. We've bounced a few things back and forth, but we really settled on, well, where are we trying to get to? Because it does change some of those options that we would present to you.
Yeah. I just wanted to point out, we assumed two and a half, which is partial. And here's what the impact is. You know, the other part of that is, oh, it's great. We get to 40% by 2030. If we maintain a consistent increase of 5% in our equalized value. If you look at the last decade, that I wouldn't necessarily think that's possible. If you take a look at the last four or five years, oh yeah, five's easy.
I thought 5% was a little ambitious, but I said, go for it.
It was 5% because I just said, keep doing it until we get back to 40. I mean, it was, that's, and Russ said, that'll be five. And I was like, okay, that's a pretty aggressive assumption based on what we experienced in the 2010s. You know, it wasn't until 2017, 2018. Russ likes to point out, you mean after I arrived? But the reality is, is we were getting nowhere for almost an entire decade. So, you know, the old line from investment commercials, you know, past results are not indicative of future results. And we have to, we have to accept that as a, as a given when we do this.
So you've got another decade in you?
That's what I was going to say. So we have to.
Does the equalized value assessed value discussion impact this discussion then? And does, because that all ship, you know, tide rises and floats all boats, whatever, that kind of thing? Does that change the projection then on this expense?
Short answer is absolutely. And that's, I mean, we, we've always known that the council has enjoyed, that's a weird term, but enjoyed looking at this spreadsheet to really see. Every assumption changes how this all goes. I mean, we go back to 20 million. We're going to get to 40% a lot sooner, but then we're not addressing anything with special assessments, at least from a borrowing standpoint. Yeah. I think you were going at, at it, what other options do we have besides going after the geo debt? And that's a fair question. And, you know, we had a very rigorous discussion at the Chief Executive Institute. And those who have adopted a wheel tax in recent years have started to have a little regret about that. Because a wheel tax is, doesn't, doesn't adjust for inflation. So you can set an amount and each $10, for example, each $10 in a wheel tax would generate for us about a half million dollars. Well, that's a half million dollars in 2023 dollars. In five years, that, the buying power of that half million plummets, especially with construction costs that James can talk to you about and just general inflation, which we all can relate to. So that was not really, people are saying, we got to find an alternative to wheel tax. Cause for, for dealing with special assessments or anything related to roads. I mean, there are some cities that are saying, we're just going to apply it to our paving. It's like, okay, what's a half million buy you now? What's a half million buy you next year? Half million only buys you what? 450 now. And you're going to see that buying power shrink. So that's a downside of wheel tax. And then there's also equity issues with wheel tax. I know Long Range Finance has talked about it. And, you know, we've got several members, former members, appreciate Adam being here because he's been through many of those discussions.
So the more I'm, I'm kicking this around in my head, the more and more I'm in favor of full. And I was thinking about it this way. I, I, I don't live on Eagle Avenue, but I drive there almost every day to drop off my kids. You know, so why shouldn't I pay for part of that road if it needs to be redone? The money is the same, whether it is all taxpayers paying for it or the taxpayer who owns the road in front of that house. You know, the money is coming from the taxpayers that live here. It's just whether or not it's spread out or it's localized. And because roads are public, everybody can drive on it, that it's leading me to think more and more that that is the right option. And funding it is obviously essential. And how that gets done is, is not what I get paid for, that's you. So get creative. But like I, just the way I'm thinking about this, the more, the more and more I really want to go full. And, and I, I don't want to disrespect anybody else's opinion. Like I, I love your research. I love, I've read, read a bunch that you've done on this and
Oh, don't worry about that. I was going to pick on the mayor. What do you see as a path towards funding this fully?
Well, Russ and Mark spent my $2 million. So shared revenue, the increase in shared revenue has a, has a caveat to it, right? It's coming back and it's got to be used for public works, public safety. You know, in, in a nutshell. And, and that's fine. We can account for that. That, that can easily go to that accounting line easily. And then it's a matter of, you know, do we have the ability to shift levy resources that were being paid for over then to a different, a different cost? In this case, special assessments. Now, using all $2 million is unreasonable. I think it is. Pretty fair to say that, I think. So, you know, is there a portion of that that we would choose to say, hey, this is a once in a generational new source of income? And we're attempting to do something that's once in a multi-generation thing here, trying to change how we, we move forward on taking care of our roads. But I think there's a, there's a link there. So can we take part of that? Can we take a million bucks of that? Half of it? Can we take some debt on? And to Mark's point, it is a regressive and limited funding source, but even a modest wheel tax. Everything in moderation, I think in this case, because what we've seen in the last five years is that going down a path that just says, we're going to do a utility fee, we're only going to do this, we're only going to do that. It ain't going to work. It hasn't worked in five years, at least for, having gotten, you know, four yeses on, on any other funding sources. And it's not reasonable, in my opinion, to put it all on, you know, into the levy itself maybe, or, or put it all on debt. I don't like the debt projections, even with doing this. That, that bothers me. The spreadsheet bothers me. Because yeah, we're getting to 40%, but it's really just moving numbers around. We're not lowering our debt. Our debt's going up over a decade.
I'll review there, yeah.
But it's trying to bring in, you know, bring in all those things, right? So.
Yeah, that's it. It's continuing to go up.
But, you know, okay. So if you're comfortable with two and a half million, an extra debt and putting that on there. You know, is there money within the levy then that can also go and a modest wheel tax that gets you to four and a half million? And now it's a part of the budget. And it goes through the normal process. You know, through this, through, through October's budget workshops in terms of how we, you know, how we pay for it. That's roughly my math.
Sounds very reasonable to me.
Sounds like we're not deciding. We don't have, no, no, that's too, too adept. And the other part is
But no, but that's important to be able to visualize.
Everybody pays into it then. That's the other part is that everybody's paying. Institutional properties that are not, you know, that's, that's the one, that's the one problem actually is that institutional problem, properties aren't though. That's my one thing that hurts me. The state should be paying, the school district and the county should be paying.
Don't forget the university.
I'll use the university again. They should, you know, they should all be paying into this. That's the one thing that special assessments makes. Now, I don't know if there's a caveat, if there's a carve out that says, you know, non, you know, parcels that don't pay taxes, that are non, non taxable. You know, do they still get a special assessment at a certain rate? I don't know if that's legal or not. We've, we've never asked that question, I don't think. So.
Yeah, I'm looking at this.
Is that feasible?
Uh, I, the city attorney has been looking into some things for us. Certainly we don't have answers right now, but you know, those are some of the things we, we take these conversations and, you know, between city manager, finance director, myself, we have those conversations with the city attorney. And then she has, either does some research or she has somebody do some research to try to, you know, come back to us and give us some input. And, you know, those are some of the things as we present some things, we would look to, to her office to help us with that level of research to be able to say to you, well, we did look at this, but her attorney's office saying, you might not want to do that. So.
Initially conceived, there were some concerns that legal had, but it's like, but you do A, B, and C. You could probably address those issues. So it's like, okay.
We currently treat parcels differently. We, we are ready to do that. Right?
As, as Coach Webber Hayes pointed out, like, there's some things that have just not been tested. I don't want to put us in a point where we're like, hey, we might be okay unless somebody complains.
Except we have the media here and we're on TV. Nobody's going to know.
Right, exactly.
And all joking aside though, that's something that's been talked about before though. Paul here that, once we do something, we can't undo it. Well, we can't easily undo it. And making it defensible is paramount. It's got to stand the test.
Um, I think I'm safe to say, and hopefully I'm not going out of my
You're a short timer. You can say what you want.
It's never stopped. Getting to the point where we're doing something that's equitable. And we toss around the idea of creating this special assessment floor. And even if you wanted to adjust that going into the future, one of the things we looked at is, you know, there are some difficulties from an equitable standpoint, on a policy standpoint. You're going to do 5,000 for a resident. You might have to be talking about doing a 5,000 floor for all types of use. So you can't carve out tax exempt or institutional property from commercial and residential property from a fairness standpoint and to pass the test. Cause there's two ways you can levy assessments, either by police powers, which is you just, you know, have the ability to grant it or on a use basis. And we've used police powers in the past. And to do that, you still have to have a reasonable basis for making that assessment calculation. And the other thing is, you could start out with a floor and increase the floor over a period of time to get to where you want to go. The hardest part is, I think, getting back to council member S and L's point that I got assessed last year. And now you're doing away with assessments. Is that fair to me? Cause I'm going to be paying it for another nine years.
I just don't think those type of arguments hold water. Government changes the rules every other
I know that, but you know what?
I just, it's, it's why we're It's why we're here though, right? I, I mean, I, I wish that, uh,
I will. I, I honestly, I don't think we're responsible for the decisions of the past, other than what we're responsible for, for the, you know, debt. But what, all we can do is make policy going forward. We can't go back four years in the past and, and fix what happened then.
No, it's cool. I mean, if a customer wants to say, I don't care that you paid whatever, I'm doing something different. You come up every two years, you run it. That works, that works?
Yeah. I just think if we did that, then we would never change anything ever, right?
But we can change it. We can change it.
Yeah, you can change.
Hey, I'm sorry. I mean, maybe this is too blunt, so don't, don't take it the wrong way. But I just noticed the two solutions proposed are, are ones that seem to be designed to simplify the administration of the assessment program. And maybe not necessarily. I mean, do you think that's the greatest thing for the taxpayer too? I just, if you know what I mean, right? If we have a floor, I get it. We're eliminating a lot of the work that goes into assessing these small things. Same deal with the sidewalks. And certainly there's a benefit to government efficiency. But I want to make sure we're not going down that road at the expense of thinking of broader impact.
When we presented this option, I think we were looking at, how do we provide relief for whatever term you want to pick? For the fact of, you know, somebody that has property in the downtown central city area with maybe more modest property values and people that have the ability to purchase and, and reside in those homes. And, you know, we, we just thought, it wasn't simplicity. We just thought that providing that first dollar relief is better than capping it at a certain dollar amount. Because then it's only the, the higher value properties that are going to benefit from creating a ceiling.
And it was, you know, trying to give everybody a benefit versus a very small percentage of receiving a benefit.
No, and I won't believe it, the point, I've said it over and over again. I think the ultimate sin that government can make is to screw a couple of people out of their house and home or out of their livelihood. And to me, that's the biggest inequity. And I just can't get around that, even though I know we're talking aggregates. I, I have to, have to at least say that, but I'll turn it over to you, Mark.
No, I, you know, I think, you know, admittedly, I think the sidewalk part does provide some, some administrative relief and which is, which is good. The, the benefit however, for sidewalks, because we hit every neighborhood every 10 years. And we don't replace, when we go through the neighborhoods like that, we don't replace every sidewalk. We replace one or two squares. So equitably speaking, everybody's going to benefit from that, even with a change in the policy. Within 10 years, it's all going to be equalized. And I gave a lot of thought to the floor because of the experience I saw with property owners, particularly in the central city, who would be faced with an assessment that as a percentage of property value was, and I just, I just remember the one. And I think this is the one that started it all. There was a young woman, she and her husband had just purchased a house. They only, they only paid about 30,000 for the house. And they were facing a $7,000 assessment, which was a quarter of the value of their property. And, and she was literally unconsolable. And the council looked at me and said, we got to do something. And that's really what started this whole thing. So the equity part, I, I'm, I'm really focused on the equity part with the floor. And it looks like we may not have the flexibility that we initially talked about. But when James ran the numbers, James didn't exclude any property. He included tax exempt, institutional, commercial. He included that all. So that's already built in.
Yeah. The tables and numbers that were presented to you were, every property had a floor applied to it.
I'm still willing to look at some of those things. I'm still willing to look at some of those things, because I think that's fair, but, and I think council wants to take a look at that, because providing relief to people who can at least afford it. You've all said it, if not outwardly, you've, you've sort of danced around that subject.
Is there a way to quantify what we expect the, I guess, the cost savings to be from not having to go through the administrative processes of all of this assessment for both the under five thousand? And again, this is another reason, I'd love to, if, I don't know if it's possible, if it's not possible, just tell me, but I'd love to just have a spreadsheet where we, these are all of our assessments, get an idea what the distribution is.
From a street reconstruction standpoint, there would be none, because you're still gonna have those utility lateral costs. So there's still going to be all of the same amount of work and all the same process. Where we would see that administrative change would be on the sidewalk rehab program. You know, as we talked about at a previous meeting, you know, there were, you know, for some of the condo associations, there were a number of bills that were sent out for ten dollars. The, you know, each unit in a condo, and it's, you know, it, it costs us that much just to generate the bill and mail it out, let alone the cost of the work that was done. So that's where, that's where there's a change. But as far as the street reconstruction program goes, with the utility, uh, component still having special assessments, there would be no change as far as an administrative-
Basically, anyone that would have any assessment below five thousand would also have a utility assessment. Is that what you're saying?
Still have a utility.
Yes, because there would still be a sanitary sewer lateral relay, there'd still be a new storm lateral or a storm lateral relay. So there would still be a component for a property, even if their street and sidewalk assessment was only forty-five hundred dollars. There would still be utility components that would be included.
And that's universal, so, okay.
I have a question for you. When we were going, when Russ had the chart on there, percentage going up two, three, four, five, six, or whatever, I think you said that you were, you know, looking at the three percent. I, I don't, maybe this will make your job easier, but it seems to me there are elements that you would have to go back then. If, if we said, whatever percent, I don't care, pick one, well, then you know how you put that in, or you can make suggestions. I think the easy thing for you guys to do is just to say, what do you want us to do? This line is, we're going to fully fund special assessments. Okay, you put the number in. We are gonna do, this capital project is gonna cost this. You put the number, and so, I don't know, am I making sense with this? I think it makes your job, so then, whatever the increase is, that's what it is.
Most of the decisions that you would be making with respect to special assessments aren't going to have an immediate impact on the twenty twenty-four budget. It's gonna be the cumulative effect as time goes on, because as-
Right, but I'm talking about all the elements that you have to go in for this year's budget.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I thought I heard several council members give me their range preference on the levy side. So that's kind of what I'll, I'll take a composite of all of that and say, all right, where, where do I believe your landing spot is where at least four of you will be comfortable with it? And that's a calculated risk that I take, that I, and I take it freely and I welcome it, otherwise I wouldn't be doing this for forty years. But that's, but that's what I, what I heard. I heard several, and I heard some people say, I want lower, and some people said I, said higher, and I'll watch the tape and we'll figure out where the landing spot is. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of where I'm, where my head's going with it. And the other thing, and I think I need to point out, because it hasn't been mentioned, but I know the council members, at least that were on last year, I still do enhancements, but what I heard from council is, Mark, you figure out the enhancements, and when you give us the budget, the enhancements have been reviewed and evaluated, and they are in the budget. We're not doing that where we add to it. Unless you want to come in and say, I disagree with you, which every council has a right to say, I disagree with it, I think we need to do more of A, B, or C. Or less of A, B, or C. And that may take that down, but I'm gonna land on a spot with the levy, and it's gonna be a balanced budget, and it's not gonna be, well, now let's play the, how many pennies? And I know, and I'm looking more at Mike, but it was clearly a consensus of the council members that they didn't want to play that game. That's, that's my job to do, and I welcome that. So, but I, I didn't say that to you yet.
No.
So I was waiting for you to, I was waiting for you to bring it up. I just assumed. Well, you assumed, right.
I have two questions, but I just want to make sure that others have chances to, to, um, I guess, if, if not, now hold your peace, I guess. Uh, two quick questions for, for actually, for James. One might be an easier one, the utility cost right now. So we're, as a reminder, and just, it's good for those listening at home, if anybody's reporting on it, and just for us, the utility cost right now, so for whatever we're gonna assess, you know, whether you're talking the twenty-two numbers or the twenty-three numbers, what is, what's an average property owner getting hit with underground in terms of cost? I know it's-
On a street, on a street reconstruction project where we're not installing new manns, current policy would be seven hundred and fifty dollars for a storm lateral. And a relay of a sewer lateral would be around three thousand dollars, I believe, right now. And then, as I said before, the water service, you know, is ours, too. The curb stops on a home, we're generally not having anything unless there's a new service being installed for larger properties where, you know, maybe there's an eight inch service, so the main is out at the main, then there would be some relay cost associated with going beyond that valve at the main.
One small follow-up. Lead replacement. A lot of our reconstruction right now, in the next couple of years, is gonna be a significant amount in central city of dollars. It's also our oldest section. There's probably a good, good probability that there's, you know, significant lead still there. We've got a policy that says six months after construction, or within six months, it's required.
Yeah, within a hundred and eighty days of either side doing work. So, you know, if a homeowner, we've had a number of places where homeowners have done their own just to get rid of it, that gives us a hundred and eighty days to get our side done. The, the same thing with the reconstruction projects. Uh, I know from a timing standpoint, a lot of them have been able to get their plumbers in. In a lot of cases, even before we get the street paved and the sidewalk restored, so they don't have to re disturb some of those areas.
And I won't expect you to talk about private, you know, what private contractors charge, but that's a couple thousand bucks. Generally, to run a new line from the curb stop to the house, and/or even across the street, if it has to go, it's even farther.
Well, but we're, we're taking, you know, it's the city's, you know, on a home, it's the city's responsibility, you know, really into that terrace. So even if we're going long side across the street, that's, that's still ours. Because it's, you know, from, the way the Public Service Commission is from the first shut off valve after the main. So for your home, that's the curb stop out in the terrace. So from your homeowner's standpoint, it doesn't matter if you're on the near side or the far side, because that's the city's responsibility to that curb stop in the terrace.
Still a couple, still several-
Yeah, what we've been seeing, what we've been seeing with the lead service replacement program, you know, a typical average has been probably in the four-ish thousand range, say, you know, maybe thirty-seven, five to forty-five hundred. Depending, you know, if your, if your house is ten feet back from the street versus fifteen versus twenty, you know, obviously, if your house is a hundred feet back, because you got this big lot, it's gonna be more. But the averages have been, I would say, between thirty-seven, fifty to forty-five hundred in most cases for those lead water service replacements. A lot of property owners are taking that opportunity to also get their sewer lateral replaced. You know, there would be no cost sharing opportunities for that. But certainly, as long as we continue to receive money from the state, from the DNR, for the lead, the private lead service replacement, then there is some cost sharing opportunities. We're still waiting to hear from the DNR on our most recent application, and current indications are, we might not hear for several months yet on the current application.
The net cost to a tech, to a property owner, if we're, if we got a grant for fifteen hundred for them, then they're paying about twenty-two hundred to three thousand.
Yeah, right now, our current policy is fifty percent up to a cap of two thousand dollars. So if, if your, if your lateral lead service replacement cost, contractor cost is forty-five hundred, you know, our program would be reimbursing two thousand of that. Like I said, as long as we're able to secure funding. Once we know all the parameters with the current program from the DNR, we may have to change the policy to match those parameters.
So the one last question, you're not gonna be able to answer it now, or at least you won't be able to provide the data. Mr. Ford alluded to a spreadsheet. Several of us are number people, like, like numbers, at least like looking at them. For example, from twenty-two or twenty-one, whatever the most recent data source you have, is there a master doc that, basically, we could see address, we could see the, the cost that they're gonna be specially assessed for, and it's really, it's tied to their, their linear foot? And then, for me, the floor thing, or the, you know, the five thousand dollars first dollar, you know, if the average is six thousand bucks, it changes the conversation, maybe. If it's only forty-five hundred bucks, maybe it answers the conversation. Is there, do you understand what I'm asking?
Kind of. Some of that data I do not have. For the estimates that I had previously provided you for twenty twenty-four, I had to have our GIS staff go through an exercise to try to create some data for me to do that analysis, because, you know, every street is different. You know, Wagu, there's a lot of forty to fifty foot lots. You know, in that case, you know, your, your street number is probably about seven thousand dollars. But if you've got a hundred and fifty foot lot, now your street number is, you know, significantly more than that. Uh, so there's not a-
I think about-
Isn't the cost per foot, excuse me, Mayor?
No, you run it.
Is the cost per foot we establish through the Board of Public Works, which is-
Correct.
Me. So, you know, and we use previous, so what's our, what's our rate for thirty-two foot street concrete? Because I'm trying to simplify-
You're gonna test, you're gonna test my memory here, but it's around a hundred and thirty-six dollars per foot. For a thirty-two foot residential street.
Let's run with that one thirty-six, because it's close. If it's a hundred foot lot in some of the more suburban-like areas, you're talking thirteen-six. If you're talking a fifty foot lot in another part of the city, it's less than seven. Tell me where you live, and I can, I can generally answer your question. And then it's like, because an average is seventy-five feet, and we don't have, it's like, yeah, but mine's a hundred and fifty feet. Well, then you better do the math a little bigger. It's your, now you're in the area, and, because, and I think that's where you were going, Mike, on the west side. Those lots were a hundred and fifty feet, they were paying a twenty grand assessment, and that was what you guys were hearing.
In all that matters, but I think, at least, maybe, let me know, Matt, if you're just, if you're, this isn't what you were thinking. I mean, I, I don't need that level of detail. I mean, we're sending out an assessment. What's the address? What's the total assessment amount we're sending? And if possible, what's the assessed value of the property? Because then that gets at, you know, if we have a five thousand dollar floor, maybe eighty percent of them go away.
I mean, because you've already got the data, because we see those when you bring them to us for the final special assessment that we got to approve. It has that-
You, you see the estimates that we send out, the final certified numbers don't, don't come back, but-
Even if that was it, at least it's-
I was trying to simplify it, but we have every street assessment that we estimated this year. You just have it on a big spreadsheet. You're just asking, can you just give me three columns?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's what they're asking for. What's the address? What's the street assessment?
I mean, I'd love, if we could have the assessed value, that'd be great, too, but I don't know how easy that is.
No, that's a lot, yeah.
But even just having the distribution of the numbers, I mean, to me, that would be huge. Maybe I'm rattling on about these naming assessments and there's like two. You know, I don't know.
Well, I remember, you know, when we approved them, you know, three or four meetings ago, there was a lot of them in the eleven to thirteen range. That's kind of where the meat of them went, twelve, thirteen, sometimes fourteen, but and so you take five off of that, and they're still at seven. I don't know how much of that is sidewalk, you know, into that assessment or whatever, but that's still, that's still a pretty big chunk of money.
And of that, probably about thirty-seven hundred of it is utilities.
Yeah, we could certainly give you the range, because that, that data absolutely exists. We just have to squish down our spreadsheet.
If it's possible.
But I think what Carl points out, and maybe statistically, you call it the, you know, in statistics class, you call it the mode. What's the most common assessment? And I think Carl's got a, I think your observation is, is pretty darn close, that it's that twelve, thirteen thousand dollar is probably the, at least this year, probably the most common. So then you knock off five thousand off of that, you're still, you're still paying seven, eight thousand dollars after a, after a floor.
You knock off forty percent.
Yes, that's another way of looking at it.
Yeah. Well, we have our bills to pay. Welcome to homeownership. That's the way it works.
Is it accurate to say that the change in assessed value that's coming up, that we were talking about earlier, is unique or rare? That, that this, this difference that's going to happen in a year or two, is that rare to have that level of change?
Equalized value to assessed value for property-
At the level that it's coming.
Every ten years.
Well-
It needs to be at a hundred percent within ten years.
Yeah, we, Mark and I, the city manager and I talked about this, and it's like, it used to be like every seven to ten years, you would go through a revaluation process. The state requires you to be plus or minus ten percent of the market. And that's where we have fallen below that. We've fallen below so much that we are gonna probably face some financial issues with the state of Wisconsin, because we've been below the ninety percent mark for a long enough period of time, and we have to get it corrected. But so, is it rare? No, every, you know, seven to ten years, yes.
Okay.
If that's rare, then, then-
Yeah. So the reason I ask is because I think that puts a timer on this assessment. If we, if nothing is done, then we don't take advantage of this happening for the next cycle. And so we end up exactly where we've been, it seems to me, but.
I think it varies by the family. You know, somebody's gonna, if you have your special assessment put on your tax bill, you're gonna, the first year, you get a special assessment, and let's say it's for fifteen years, and it's, let's say fifteen thousand, because the math is easy. My tax bill just went up a thousand dollars. In their mind, the, the bottom line is what they're looking at. My tax bill just went up a thousand dollars. And if you're paying fifteen hundred a year in taxes, it goes up to twenty-five. That's a sixty percent increase in your taxes versus if you're paying a five thousand dollar tax bill, it goes up a thousand, it went up twenty percent. Both are gonna aggravate people. Other people are gonna look at it compared to their mortgage. I mean, I always talk about kitchen table discussions that families have. That's what's gonna get discussed at the kitchen table. In any event, they're gonna be angry, because special assessments are aggravating. But are they, are they part of life, as, as Paul's pointed out? I mean, we can provide the, the range of assessments, because that's information we already have, and we could do that, James. But I think Carl probably, probably ballparked it pretty well, that we're probably looking at the ten to fifteen thousand is the the more common, the mode in statistical terms. Still pretty heavy.
I mean, is it, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna ask you, Mike, does that, does it being in Carl's, the range Carl laid out there, and then having the five thousand floor solve, or answer your concern?
It may. I, I'd like to just see, I'd, the distribution. So I wouldn't want to just see a range given to me.
I saw Mike do this. He got his distribution.
Absolutely, yeah.
His bell curve came out.
All right. I think, I think we can do that, and I think that would be helpful for everybody, just to get their bearings straight. Where Mike and I had our sort of deep discussion was-
Yeah, that was from the-
The ones on West Ninth were so high, and it, because they were twenty thousand, Mike's thought was, well, what if you cap those?
I know.
And it's like-
I'd be able to play with them.
If you cap them, uh, you may provide relief for people at the very top end, but you provide no relief. Next year, when we do Wagu, the average is gonna be closer to seven to ten. I'm just predicting that, because based on the numbers, because streets on Wagu, or houses on Wagu are just narrower. They're gonna still come and yell. They're not gonna say, mine's cheaper than the one on West Ninth. No, they're not gonna say that. They're gonna be, my house is worth a hundred thousand, and I have a ten thousand dollar assessment, that's ten percent of the value of my house. That's the stuff that's gonna grate on them.
Honestly, I mean, if there was a, and then I'll shut up soon. I mean, other municipalities, there's a couple of examples I've found, that have basically a special assessment relief fund, something that is- that is means tested, where you're using one-time money, maybe it's stuff that we have in our surplus right now, um, that's there, if it's available, that's something folks can apply to based on their financial situation. They have an assessment that's, you know, out of whack with their property values, and that could apply to anyone. And you can means test it, and you can make sure, and maybe that's too complicated. Um, and maybe that's not necessary. Maybe when I see these, the, the actual distribution, um, it'll, it'll show me that's not necessary, but I, I still think that's important. But regardless, what I'm hearing from everybody, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but at least the four of you are interested in getting rid of them completely, and would like to see what a path to that would look like financially. I reading that right?
You can call yourself a half a person.
I said, I raise my hand, but I'm not.
Oh, at least you're a half. Yeah, I, I think I'm interested in at least seeing it, uh, whether or not, yeah, I, I'd like to see if there's.
Something with additional revenue sources.
Yep.
As we look at that, that, and then there'll be implications, which I think is why you're qualified. The statement, it's like, I like it until I don't. And you may see something and go, well, that's not what I had in mind. And we owe that to you guys. I'm really, if, if you are aware of some of these relief, I would love to take a look at them. Yeah. I think that would be good for us to look at.
Anything else on the topic? Not for tonight. Mark, Russ, anything more from you guys on the budget?
No, I really appreciate the discussion.
Uh, next budget workshop is roughly when?
The all-day ones at the end of October. I didn't bring my calendar.
The 30th and the 31st, I believe.
Yeah.
I think James is correct. For those that are new, those are typically, uh, is it 8 to 4, roughly?
Roughly.
Roughly, 8 to 4, two full days, back to back.
We feed you to keep you here. Kinds of sugar.
All kinds of sugar. Other than that, appreciate the discussion this evening and your attention. So we'll adjourn the meeting. Have a good night, everybody.